Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Ed Markounas. This is a public hearing via teleconference that is being held pursuant to Executive Order 202-1, issued by Governor Andrew Cuomo on March 12, 2020, which continues any suspensions or modifications of law made by Executive Order 202 for 30 days until April 11, 2020. Executive Order 202 declared a state disaster emergency for the entire state of New York due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Executive Order 202 dot one provides, among other things, for the suspension of Article 7 of the Public Offices Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. I ask that the village clerk, Amy Paffenroth, to call the roll.
This is Amy Paffenroth. Trustees, please say present when your name is called. Trustee Albert?
Present.
Trustee Gerard?
Present.
Trustee Barone? I'm listing him as absent now. Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Present.
Mayor Markounas?
Present.
Also present on this teleconference are our village treasurer, Michael Chino, and Assistant Village Attorney, Robert Magrino.
I ask the board to please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice. Joining our upcoming meetings, due to the COVID-19 health emergency, the workshop meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 28, 2020, at 7:00 PM will be canceled. The next regular meeting of the village board of trustees will be held on Monday, May 4, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Next, I have an opening statement. As of today, we have not encountered any violations of Governor Cuomo's executive orders regarding large gatherings or the closure of nonessential businesses. Physical and social distancing measures along with stay-at-home procedures have been followed by our residents. Due to this cooperation, we are not aware of any COVID-related health emergency cases in our village. The village's staff, along with our police department, volunteer firefighters, and Department of Public Works professionals are working hard to keep our village safe, clean, and healthy. The volunteer efforts of Suffering Residents has been outstanding. Additional volunteers will be needed to serve in support of friends and neighbors, assisting our village, county, state, and country in varied ways. As our region begins to experience the full impact of COVID-19 with community as our foundation, we will get through this crisis together. I thank all of you who have stepped up to help during these trying times. The village's volunteer list continues to grow and opportunities abound for those who can help us using the wonderful skills that each of us possess. I have requested that the village set up an email address specifically for residents to send their questions or concerns throughout the COVID emergency at covid19@sufferingny.gov. That is covid19@sufferingny.gov. I am also working with my staff to create a link on our website to the COVID-19 email address. Representatives from the village will review and forward questions to the appropriate department heads to be answered. I wish all of you a healthy and safe weekend or week, and I want you to know that the village's police department, volunteer fire department, and the Department of Public Works and the entire village staff are working every day for the residents of the village of Suffering. Thank you. Not 7:15. Okay, so now it's not 7:15. We can't start early.
No, you can't start early. Michael, do you suggest that we go on to the other? I could do the updates, or should I stick to the agenda?
No, you can certainly do the updates, but keep it to six minutes, I guess, or five.
Where are you?
We are on four on the very bottom.
Okay, so we will now continue with the regular meeting of the board of trustees scheduled for this evening. Okay, I have a grant update that was provided by Fred Rella that I will have the village clerk, Amy Paffenroth, read for the minutes.
Our grant writer, Fred Rella, has been working hard to secure current and future grant opportunities. In particular, he will be working diligently to seek out and secure grant-specific funding for COVID-19-related matters that have an impact on our municipality. Our grant application for a backhoe, which is $125,000, has been approved by the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, DASNE, and the New York Division of Budget. This grant, as with most grants, is a reimbursement grant. The purchase of the backhoe should not incur until all agreements are in place with DASNE. This could be a couple of months, which is typical. Fred will keep the board posted on the grant process. The Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, application for this year has been postponed until further notice. Our project that will be submitted when the program opens up again is to install new sidewalks, curbs, and driveway aprons on West Maple Avenue, which is located within the West Ward. The estimated cost of the project is $198,000. Regarding the impact of COVID-19 on our municipality with the recent passage of the Economic Stimulus Act and the discussions of future stimulus incentives forthcoming, our grant writer, Fred Rella, will apply for those grant opportunities that the village of Suffering is eligible for and desires to pursue. So we thank you, Fred.
I have a recreation update that was provided by Kathy Mills that I will have Amy Paffenroth, the village clerk, read into the minutes.
Kathy, Nancy, Elaine, and Andrea have been working and communicating remotely. They are working with the mayor to continually find new ways to engage our community with different activities for children, families, and seniors. They have been using this time to reach out to seniors via phone calls to check in. They have a list of seniors who attend our many programs, and our seniors have been thrilled to have someone to talk to. Nancy has been working with the mayor to provide ongoing contact and Facebook updates and has done a tremendous job of getting various types of messages out to the community. Recreation has been sending out weekly village updates and weekly recreational updates to keep people active and informed. Andrea has been providing information for families and for children, which is a huge hit with so many. Recreation has been keeping a database of volunteers who are willing to step up and help others in this time of need. Suffering is an amazing community filled with people who continue to help others. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, we may need to switch to that other phone number.
You want to do that?
Okay.
What other phone number?
Let's switch. Oh, Charles is... Charles, are you on the line?
I am.
Charles is back. Charles is on.
You should probably call for a motion to finish the meeting and then move on to the other one. You have to hang up and start the other one.
All right, so let's continue on then.
Well, let's have a motion to adjourn. Regular meeting? Continue the regular meeting.
Is there anything else that we needed to cover in the regular meeting, or no?
Yes, we need to go back to the regular meeting, but the hearing is in the middle.
We'll continue with the regular hearing, regular meeting, Michael, right?
You're going to continue the regular meeting after the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to switch over to public hearing?
Hold on, everybody. Hold on. Should we just go through the meeting? Let's just go through the meeting and delay the public hearing.
Correct. I agree with that.
I'm good with that. Should anybody call in on that other number and let people know that we're delayed?
I don't think we can do that. I don't know.
That's a good point.
Good point.
No, I don't think we can do that.
All right.
If I pick up another phone, would I be able to call it, or no?
You can call the other number, but I think it's just going to say it hasn't started yet.
It's ended a public hearing. Okay, so let's go back and go back to the public hearing. Let's make a motion to continue the regular meeting until after the public hearing this evening.
Trustee Gerard makes the motion.
Trustee Gerard?
Second.
Trustee Corrigan, second. Any discussion?
This is Rob Magrino. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you, Rob.
Before we do that, if we intend... If you intend on picking up this call later, we should give a time when we expect to be back so that people can get back.
Well, I would suggest that you can just...
Or continue with this one now.
Well, could we not also continue at the same number that they're dialing in for the public hearing? If anybody's online now, they'd know that the meeting was continuing on to the...
Or I have an idea. Is there any way we could just conference that other meeting into this?
No, you can't combine the two meetings.
So at the end of the public hearing...
It's a good suggestion if we can have the public hearing and continue the rest of this meeting on that same number.
I think that's what we should do.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we do. So we have the motion and we'll continue the public hearing, the regular meeting after the public hearing.
On that call.
On that call.
Do you want to give that number out now so that people who are on can get on?
Okay, I have it. Michael, do you have it handy?
I don't have it handy, actually, Mayor.
Okay, I think we have it. Hold on. Okay, so anyone from the public that is listening, the public hearing, we will be moving to the phone number Michael, they don't use the access code, do they?
There's a public access code. Amy, do you have that handy?
Oh, I don't.
I don't have the public access code.
I think I do. Hold on. I think I do. Give me a second.
Mayor, maybe you want to give the number another time.
Yes, when Jo gets... If she gets the public access number, I'll read the phone number again.
Okay, the public access number is...
Let me just read the number again. After I finish, you can pick up with the public access. So the number to dial in for the public is 914-614-3221. Jo?
And then it's 433-909-582.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll call in on the other line so we can all hang up.
Do we have to say all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Jo, why don't you give that access code again?
Oh, uh...
Sorry.
Um, you know, wait a minute.
433.
No, no, no.
Did I say 433?
No, Amy, it might be the wrong one because I was going with the number 213.
Oh, that's this one. Never mind. That's the wrong one. Jo, that's the wrong one, though. That's the one for this call.
We need the one for the public hearing, Jo, if you have that.
I'm looking at this. It says Monday, April 6, 15. And I have this number.
Yeah, but that's your number, Charlie, if it came to your email.
All right, so that's just for me?
Well, I'm going to Suffering NY.
Yeah.
It was very confusing to have two separate numbers.
I only see the 7 o'clock number on Suffering NY.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was the same. I thought it was that meeting. That's the only one that I had for the budget. I thought the public was calling into the same number for the whole thing.
Let me see if I can find that number.
Okay, please.
Was that number not published, then? How were people aware of the number for the second meeting? Because maybe we should just stay on this one.
It was published, and it was in the paper, but I didn't bring that folder with me.
Amy, was that put on the website?
It was, but then I think I was just confused because I thought it was two separate... I thought it was one number instead of two separate numbers. So I published the one number. Both numbers were published, but then I published just the one number most recently.
Rob, can we just stay on this call and just continue on?
Well, the concern I have is, you know, I think most people would check the website. The concern is that, you know, now we have confusing or differing call-in numbers, so there may be some people who theoretically don't know about this one who are calling to that and vice versa, so my feeling is to adjourn, just adjourn the other one to maybe next Monday or something and republish it.
It may or may not work, but I'm going to try and call the other number and conference it in. It may work, it may not work, but I have nothing to lose because we're just kind of spinning our wheels here.
But the public doesn't know about it. I don't know how much...
That's not going to work. You can't do that. Let me see if there's a number here. Here we go. All right, let's see. The number to call is going to be 914-614-3221. And the attendee for the public is 755-588-882. So once again, the phone number for the public hearing is going to be 914-614-3221, and the access code is 755-588-882.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
All right, and then we all have our own code, so I guess right now we're going to switch to that, right? Okay, I'm dropping off this, and I'm going to find you. Oh.
Wait, are we...
We're dropping off, right?
We're all dropping off. We're going into the public hearing, and then we're going to continue the public hearing at that new number, and then we're going to continue the regular meeting after the public hearing on that same number.
Okay.
Good. Thanks. Okay, just give that number again, Mayor, so that we're clear, so people are clear.
Michael has it. Telephone number 914-614-3221, and the access code is 755-588-882.
Just so we're clear, everything is going to be continued on that call. Whoever wants to call in should call in on that number.
Okay, I'm dropping off this one and calling the other one. Bye.
Before anyone lets me go, I'm on my email, and I have that number, but there's an access code that is my own access code?
Yes, it's on the email that you received from like about an hour before the meeting.
I'm calling that one in now.
We've arrested the Police and Fire Department update, ma'am.
Okay, so at this time, I have a Police and Fire Department update that will have Ms. Paffenroth, the village clerk, read into the record. Please.
Thank you, ma'am. The coronavirus pandemic is presenting unprecedented challenges for police department and our volunteer firefighters. Our first responders have continued to fight to stay healthy while serving our community. The men and women of our police department and volunteer Suffering Fire Department daily serve our residents, and as a village, we are very proud of them for taking care of our community. The police department and the fire department has worked closely with the mayor regarding providing our first responders with personal protection equipment and to make sure our police cars and fire trucks are sanitary and safe as they serve our community during the COVID emergency. Rest assured that the police department and fire department will continue to respond to all emergencies as normal. We have taken an oath, they have taken an oath, to protect the people within our village, and that has not changed. In order to prevent the spread of any illness, we ask that when you call 911 or the Suffering Police Department for an emergency, that you alert the dispatcher if anyone is currently ill or recovering from the novel coronavirus. Further, the first arriving units on the scene will ask questions to ensure that we limit the risk and exposure and spread. Our first responders ask that you do not be offended by the questions as they are not trying to be rude in any way, but just attempting to do their job properly. We as a village have taken the steps internally to ensure that we provide the best service to you. With all of us working together, we can overcome this virus and help keep our great village protected. We pray for everyone's good health and look forward to serving our residents now and for the days to come. Thank you, Police and Fire Department.
Thank you. I have the Department of Public Works update that will have the village clerk, Ms. Amy Paffenroth, read into the record, please.
The Department of Public Works consists of water, wastewater treatment, and street and refuse. As always, but particularly during the health emergency, the Public Works Department and its CSEA employees are essential to the village of Suffering and the state of New York. Our employees come to work each day and are at the front line of this pandemic in many, but often unnoticed ways, which will be highlighted tonight. The Water Department monitors and maintains our water's input resources and water purity throughout our village. Our wastewater treatment employees maximize the water treatment process so that water released back into our environment continues to be safe for our residents, the states of New York, and the residents of New Jersey. Our street and refuse department are seen by our residents daily maintaining our community's infrastructure, keeping our village clean and sanitary, and making sure roads and parks are maintained. The impact that the health emergency has had on our workers must be recognized. We thank the Department of Public Works under the supervision of Joe Hunt, CSEA president, for the vital services that they provide to our residents, especially during times of an emergency, such as the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Department of Public Works.
Okay, now I ask the board to vote on the following resolutions by consent to include A through B.
Do you want to reach Y on that?
Yes. A is amending the 2019-2020 general fund budget to transfer funds from employees' benefits to police personal services. B, amending the 2019-2020 budget for legal services. C, declaring certain computer equipment as surplus. D, authorizing the mayor to appoint... Uh, hold on.
Michael.
Authorizing the mayor to... Michael Stewart as the Street and Refuge Department Laborer effective April 7, 2020.
And to appoint Mr. David Clohesi.
And F, authorizing the mayor to appoint Mr. David Clohesi to as the Street and Refuge Department Laborer effective April 7, 2020. That's by adoption by consent. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, was that last one letter E, or was that two names?
No, A through E, I'm sorry.
A through F.
A, B, C, D.
Oh, we left one out. Hold on. I'm sorry, guys. Hold on.
Advocating on the behalf of the residents of Rockland County is fourth name.
Yes, so it's A through F. Do you all have A through F?
I do.
I do.
The ones I was looking at were in a different order, but I do.
Yes.
I have A through F.
Okay. All right, so those are the...
That's right.
Six resolutions adopted by consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan. Oh, sorry.
What was the question, Steve?
Amending the 1920 budget for legal services. Could someone give me a quick explanation of that?
Mike, do you have that?
I'm not sure. Which one is that? I'm sorry.
I gotta get it. I have to see.
I'll give it to you right here.
It's C. I'm getting the resolution. I'm in the midst of papers. He resolved the village board authorized the village treasurer to transfer $107,000 from the general fund contingent account to the village attorney contractual expenditures account.
All right, so is that paying Keenan Bean's bill for the lawsuit against the board?
Mike, would that money be used?
It's providing money in... The money would be used for that as well as other legal costs.
All right, so by saying yes to that, Keenan Bean's bill is getting paid?
No, you have to have a separate resolution to pay Keenan Bean.
Okay, thank you.
Is there some reason that we're not doing these one at a time?
We're trying to save time.
All right, I'm ready to vote yes.
Okay, do I have a motion for A through F?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second? I'll second it.
I'd feel more comfortable to do these one at a time myself.
Agreed.
And you're going to pay the transcript. That's fine.
Okay, all right. Now give me the seven resolutions.
We're going to go on to our money, but we'll go through it.
Where is the first one?
Well, is there one that we want to pull out so that we can do, say, five or four out of the A through F?
They're probably all fine, but I think it's, you know, for the public record, myself, I would like them each individually...
The public has received copies of these resolutions. They're posted on the website.
What's the board's choice?
And they will be in a minute.
I'd like to do them all at once.
Okay, trustee Barone, all at once. I would like to do them all at once. Anyone else?
And we're sure that the legal services, no bills will be paid until the board approves them?
Need the separate resolution.
To pay any attorney fees for legal fees.
Um... I wouldn't make that statement. Mike?
As you know, we... As you know, we pay our bond counsel when we have to pay them, they're not included in this. If there was a special attorney that was used for insurance, that we might pay through our insurance, that would not be included in this. This is for outside counsel for special purposes. So, in other words, i- i- you need a separate resolution. There was, the board had asked that any outside legal fees, other than the standard things that we have to do, uh, would be done after the board reviewed and approved the vouchers.
So this is one oh seven, if it gets moved over there, are bills going to be paid?
The, the bills don't have to be paid until you have a resolution. Alls it does is move the money to give you money in the fund, in the account.
I'm in the line item.
In, in the proper line item from which it would be paid. Uh, let's be frank about it, you're talking about two legal council bills that are out there right now, that the board has to have a resolution to pay. And, and this would provide the funding for, to pay those bills.
But a resolution has to be made to pay them, correct?
Yes, you need a separate resolution by the board that they've reviewed and approved for payment, the bills for outside legal counsel.
Okay. Then I second the nation to do everything at once with that explanation.
Okay, so wait a second, you have any further discussion? Favor? Trustee, uh, Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Corrigan, okay, aye. Any nays? Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say nay. I'd rather vote on them individually, I'm gonna say nay.
No, 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 the, motion passed. Motion passed.
I didn't hear anybody else.
Everybody said yes, except for trustee Gerard. Trustee Gerard said nay. Okay. All right, so we're good here.
So I have mayor, Charles Barone, Corrigan, uh, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Albert.
And trustee Albert as yes.
Yes.
And trustee Gerard as no.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, now.
Did we all vote to say? No, we didn't do the vote, we just voted to say that we're...
Yeah, but, yeah, but that's the vote, you took a roll call vote, yep.
So that was passed.
Yes, motion passes. All right, now. Hold on.
That's the one, yeah.
Man, I'm getting swamped in papers here.
It's item number ten on the...
Okay, so item number ten, if one of the trustees would like to present item number ten?
Um, okay. Before I, uh, I was gonna say, before we present number ten, I just want to make sure that everyone received the email that I forwarded from, uh, the paralegal that works with, uh, Mr. Glickel. I sent it, I sent it shortly before the meeting by email. Uh, the, the, we, I'd asked for two things, they only agreed to one of them, and I just want to make sure that that's okay.
So please, uh, inform the board.
Okay, so there were two questions, one of them was whether there would be any arrangement to true up if we don't use all the legal services that, uh, would be part of the a- a- agreement. And the answer is absolutely yes, and that's contained in that email. The second thing was that, uh, the mayor had originally requested a five thousand dollar, uh, amount, uh, preliminarily, um, and that's per month, on a monthly basis. And originally, uh, they, they, uh, uh, the paralegal did say that that would work, but actually, Mr. Glickel said no, apparently no. He, he wants the ten thousand, but that he would absolutely refund any difference that we don't use. And it would be two, that would be ten thousand.
We start out the ten thousand dollar retainer, and that if we don't use it, we get it back.
We don't use it, we get it back, and that would be for two months, not one month. In other words, he, he's very, uh, you know, for whatever reason, wants to specify that it's two months and not one month. So, uh, I just want to make sure that that's okay, because, uh, they, they led me to believe one thing on the phone, and then when I got the email, which I did forward to the whole board and the mayor and to Amy, uh, that was not the case.
That's agreeable to me.
Myself as well.
Yeah, no, it's, it's agreeable to me, I just want to make sure it's okay.
Yeah, uh, okay, by me as well.
Mike, Mike is aware of the ten thousand dollar retainer?
The, uh, trustee Albert, did you make Mr. Janito aware of the retainer?
Uh, I, mister, um, I did receive a copy of the, of the retainer, I guess whoever had sent it out. And, uh, you know, it does say, it is different than the other proposal that had been made, it, it's ten thousand dollars over two months. I was one that raised the question that, you know, does this mean that we pay this amount and then don't get it back? One thing that's kind of odd is that why, why do we have to put up ten thousand dollars to somebody that we may not even call them for advice? And then have them hold ten thousand dollars of our money for two months, as opposed to the other firm, which is willing to bill us after all the work is done? And if, I read the original retainer, and I'm not an attorney, but it appeared to me that the way it was worded was, you put the ten thousand dollars up, if we go over the ten thousand dollars, they will then bill us after the fact. In other words, it's not a not to exceed amount, it's simply, we'll do it with a ten thousand dollar retainer, and if we go over that amount, we'll send you a separate bill. So unless there's a, a difference...
I just forwarded you an email, I apologize for not including you on the forward before, uh, where they say they will refund whatever's unused.
So, are you telling me that, uh, I'll have to take a look at that email, but is the, let me take, see if I can find it here. Okay, so that's, that's an answer to an email question, but I, if, if Rob Magrino is still on the line, I'd, I'd ask that he, um, he provided some response to this, because wouldn't you want a retainer agreement that you could see? I don't know if legally, that's gonna be separate. If you sign this retainer agreement as it was sent, uh, most contracts are what is written there, unless there is that addendum added to the contract and signed off by both parties. Again, I'm not an attorney, but that's my understanding.
I, I think they're willing to adjust the contract, I just got the email so that we can have it before the meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll leave it up to Rob Magrino, 'cause he, Rob's, well, Rob is the attorney.
Yeah, I'm, uh, this is Rob, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, I agree with Mike, if, if, uh, I haven't seen the email, uh, either, so if you want to forward it, um, please do, but, um, yeah, I, I would just ask that they, uh, include it in the, um, in the retainer agreement so that it's clear, because, um, yeah, if, if there's a dispute, um, you know, to go back to emails and everything, uh, would be, uh, difficult and, and maybe, and likely unenforceable. So, yeah, if you want to ask them to add that, uh, in about, um, you know, providing bills, and, and typically the way this works, he's saying a minimum ten thousand dollar retainer, he would still do a bill, so in other words, I would expect that after thirty days, although, you know, he reserves the right to do it thirty or sixty days, which is fine, but let's say after thirty days, he does four thousand dollars worth of work, uh, or however many hours it was, he would send that to the village and say, okay, here's your bill, I have ten thousand on retainer, and, uh, you know, the, the, you've used up four thousand, and then et cetera, as, as you go forward, so. Um, but yeah, if there's clarification, I would just ask them, oh, I just see it came in, Steve, hold on.
Yeah, yeah.
Rob, you saw the original proposal, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, you know, try, oh, okay, so... Okay, so I, I see what he's doing, he, he, what he's saying in this email is they'll place ten thousand into his attorney trust account, meaning it's, it's not, it doesn't go into his pocket the minute you give it to him, it's in his trust, and this is again, not an uncommon thing, goes into his trust account, uh, he'll provide a bill, this says, um, reconcile at the end of sixty days.
Right.
But he will, uh, transfer the amount bill. He'll transfer the amount billed each month per itemized invoice. And, and, and I agree, just accounting wise, it's probably just easier for him, frankly, but, you know, it's up to the board to get the ten thousand as opposed to five to five, but I leave that to you guys. But, but what is in this, uh, email, I would suggest that we ask them to add to the retainer agreement.
Yeah, I think they're willing to do that.
But I would say, I'm sorry, so let's, if we're going to move forward with this, Mr., um, Mr. Albert, I would make the recommendation that the retainer, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the retainer agreement upon review and approval by Mr. Magrino.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as we're all in agreement that those are the, that what's in that email is what, um, are the changes that we're asking for.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I just wanted to make sure that the ten thousand situation is acceptable.
It is with me.
Yes, it is with me.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I, I think, um, there shouldn't be an issue for them to rewrite the contract, so I would, any kind of vote we would take, I would say that pending, you know, submission of a modified agreement that reflects the contents of the email.
Right, and we, and if there's a, I will try to work it out with them, or if you want to try to work it out with them, uh, that's fine, and if there's an issue, we can address it maybe at the budget, you know, as part of that meeting, uh, next week.
Right. But, yeah.
So if you'd like, Mr. Alpert, since you've been working on it, why don't you read it into the record?
Wh- wh- what, would you like me to read the entire contract?
No, the resolution.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, hang on, I don't have it in front of me, give me a moment.
Well, the re, but the resolution, I didn't get an updated resolution today, so the resolution is actually not stating what...
Correct, but it's gonna be, the retainer will be reviewed, modified and reviewed and approved by Rob Magrino based on our discussion here.
So it'll be modified retainer.
It's a modified retainer.
So we're gonna, okay.
Yeah, you just put in assistant bills to him.
Yes, okay, I understand.
Now, would you like me to read, is what's here on the, uh, in the agenda, which I have in front of me, or do you need the actual, uh...
You could use that one, but just move, move the motion, and then the board will vote on it.
Okay, all right. Uh, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to retain labor attorney, Richard Glickel, to provide legal advice and consultation concerning the rights and responsibilities that the village has as an employer and of those department heads and employees, uh, at the current time during the COVID-19 health emergency, not to exceed ten thousand dollars for a maximum of a hundred and twenty days, uh, upon review and approval by Rob Magrino for the modified, uh, version that will be forthcoming from the law firm.
As per discussion tonight.
As, as per discussion.
Uh, I just add assistant village attorney, so that it's, it's clear to me now who Rob Magrino was.
Okay.
And that is for, and that is for all legal labor council functions, not just COVID-19.
Well, the retainer does say COVID.
Yeah. No, it also says other, it also says all other legal matters when it comes.
But I think the original, the original, the original request that we had made on this was based on the fact that myself and Rob were getting questions from department heads, and sometimes from employees, just in general, that dealt with COVID-19 and their rights and, and what they have in terms of time, if they had to take off time for their own illness as a result of COVID-19, and for perhaps the illness of other people that they had to take care of, or even if they just had to be quarantined because they were exposed. This wasn't meant to go out for general labor questions, this was all about the COVID-19 emergency, and that's why we had not to exceed five thousand on the original request we made, uh, because we just didn't believe that there was going to be that many questions on it, just that if something came up that required us to make sure we had the right answer, given all the new laws, rules, and regulations that were either waived or changed or, uh, suspended on the various executive orders, uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if all labor matters would be included.
I would like this to be amended for all labor matters, if not just the ones related to COVID-19.
We need a labor attorney.
Yes, and I, and I think that's what the, what the proposal that he sent in covers, and I think that's what's right to do for the village, because we don't know what is gonna happen in the next week or two, and I think that this covers our village the best. And this is what we should do, and we should get all legal counsel.
Just the...
Just all labor related legal counsel.
Labor, yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Just, uh, it's, just so it's clear, uh, I'm going to read what he wrote for scope of representation, if, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Just says, "This office has been or will be engaged to represent the village for the purpose of labor and employment-related matters, including amongst other things, providing advices count and counsel as requested by the village regarding employment agreements and labor contracts, personnel, civil service, and other related labor issues, to the extent requested by the village, and the rendition le, of legal services required in addressing the client's requests." And then there's a footnote.
Did we lose you, Rob, you're gonna read the footnote, or no?
Oh, I think we lost Rob.
Footnote.
Rob, are you there? Mike, do you see if Rob dropped?
No, he's still showing up with his mic on, now it says he's offline.
He's probably gonna re, he's gonna come back in.
Well, what Rob, um, read to me satisfies me that this is, you know, anything the village needs regarding labor, not just COVID-19, so I'm happy with that.
I am as well, I think we should vote on that. I think it covers the village complete.
Yep. I have a copy of what he was reading in front of me.
Has the terms as well. All right, just give him a chance, he'll come back in, let's see if he comes back.
Uh, what happens at the end of the hundred and twenty days?
Renewable, that's what you need to have, uh...
Renewable.
Okay.
At a different rate, mind you. The rate goes up after a hundred and twenty days.
We'll work on that in a hundred and twenty days.
What's that?
If I got lost, I'm back.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Just reading the footnote.
You're reading the footnote? Talking about the renewable...
You got lost in the footnote.
Okay.
Okay, so while you were gone, Rob, we all kind of decided that we'd like to vote yes for all matters.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted it out there for what it was, what was in the scope of representation.
What's in the footnote, Rob, just, was it anything concerning?
No.
And then the renewable rate was, um, two seventy-five, the introductory rate was, uh, two fifty-five, and the renewable rate is two seventy-five.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so you made the motion, uh, uh, trustee Albert, do I have a...
I, I didn't actually say the word, do I have a, I think, I guess if I was reading it, I should have said, do I have a motion?
There you go, go ahead.
Do I have a...
Motion. Motion, trustee Gerard.
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Do I have any discussion?
I hear it. Dog has discussion.
Somebody's, somebody's happy.
My, my dog objects.
Okay, so I, I have, I have a, a point to make, and I need to make the public aware that I was trying to work out an amicable resolution to work, um, to get a significant reduction in the invoice with Keenan Bean. to get a significant reduction in the invoice with Keenan Bean, that they were willing to do that, but the board once again put their own personal interests ahead of the village residents, just like they did when they violated New York state law, when they motioned to appoint and appointed Terry Rice as village attorney, and that's according to the Honorable Paul Marks of the Supreme Court of the State of New York in the county of Rockland. Despite the defamatory language used by certain members of the board, Keenan Bean was willing to reduce its bill if the board agreed to allow me to reappoint them as village attorney. The village board rejected it. Then Keenan Bean also, upon negotiations with me, was willing to cut the bill to reduce the rate if the board agreed to allow me to reappoint them as labor council. Once again, the board rejected the proposal. Now our village is stuck with paying the full invoice, all due to the illegal actions taken by three board members. Think about it, this is not, this, not only did the board cause the unnecessary, unnecessary spend, but they have rejected cost savings once again. It is outrageous in the midst of this budget issue we face, in the midst of all of this pandemic. I will not let this happen without every resident knowing exactly what this board has done and continues to do to the village. I am certain the residents of Suffolk will not forget about this neither. We're talking about, I was able to get a cost savings to the village upwards of $25,000, and the board once again denied it. And since I had the authority to appoint Keenan Bean to represent me in the challenge, the illegal actions of the three board members, I signed the retainer with Keenan Bean, and I have the unilateral right to authorize the treasurer to pay Keenan Bean the full invoice. I believe that if this invoice is not paid at the same time, Keenan Bean will commence legal action for payment, which the village will then have to hire an additional attorney to defend paying more legal fees for the illegal actions of three trustees. At that point, Keenan Bean might also be inclined to include in its action claims defamation against certain individual board members. Would you really want to see that happen?
Interesting spin, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, are we moving forward?
Have we officially voted on this?
I do believe so.
I don't, I didn't think we took it all in favor.
Oh, we did not.
And just for the record, I was not told that Keenan Bean had offered to reduce their bill if they were allowed to come back into the village.
There was no, it was a discussion of no way, no way Keenan Bean will ever come back into this village and represent the board. All in favor? All in favor?
Want to do a roll call?
Aye.
You want to do a roll call?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Trustee Barone, aye.
Any abstentions, any nays? Mayor Markounis, nay. I have a motion to adjourn the meet, close the meeting.
Uh, no.
No, uh, we have the trustee section of the-
Oh, I'm sorry, there you go.
The trustee section of the-
Go ahead, trustee, trustees, trustee Albert, I think I usually start with.
I, 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 I have, uh, just, there was an email that came in actually for, um, Mr. Janito, uh, while we were on line here, so I don't know if, uh, if he wants to check the email, but he might want to just take a quick look.
I'm sorry, what, what email would that be?
Uh, an email came in, let me see if you were copied in on it, that would be interesting, because it's addressed to you. Uh, it was sent to mayor, budget, clerk. Yeah, mayor, budget and clerks, I guess you would have gotten it as part of mayor. Uh, there were some comments that apparently were sent, uh, that were not addressed during the budget portion of the hearing of our, you know, that we had. Uh, and, and a person said that they sent the comments, uh, previous, and they were not addressed, so I'm not sure what that's about, why it wasn't addressed, but I, I didn't receive them. Send them out now, I got it now.
Uh, we can read that into the record at the April 8th, as part of the April 8th, uh, you know, on April, uh, 14th, I guess is our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sure, no, that's fine, I just wanted to acknowledge the receipt of the email. Apparently, it was sent initially just, uh, just to Mr. Janito, and then now it's sent, it's sent to everyone.
Well, here, in order to swash any, uh, concerns, we can read this now, I will read it now, um, and we can read it into the record with the budget hearing on the 14th as well. Uh, this is what she, uh, basically said, this, uh, came out as, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Trustees, I have four items for your consideration. In light of the extreme situation that we are in with people unemployed and local businesses closed, what steps will be the village be taking to lessen the tax burden on residents and business owners? Number two, why have the following positions been added to this year's budget, a records person part-time, auto mechanic one, mechanic, equipment operator one?" Well, again, that will be part of the, uh, questions that will have the department heads answer. Number three, many salaries have not increased, however, quite a few have increased dramatically. Other than contractual obligations, how are you justifying some of these salary increases? I believe we addressed that earlier in the, uh, budget hearing by noting that most of the salary increases that are there are related, are contractual increases related to CSEA and PBA contracts, with the exception of some promotions, about four or five promotions. Number four, I think it's only fair that the four trustees relinquish their salaries of $38,250 in total to go towards the legal costs that were incurred to the village through their illegal actions. Thank you for your consideration of these matters. Elizabeth Listwan, 153 Docksbury Lane. And, uh, so there, we're going to read these, and we'll read them again as part of, uh, the record on the 14th with the official budget hearing. And I have to apologize to Ms. Listwan, I, I see that she has been listening to our budget hearing and our, our budget meeting, our regular meeting as well, so, thank you.
I also apologize for that oversight. Okay, uh, trustee Gerard.
Uh, yes, I have. I have, uh, two resolutions, um, I want to, uh, present today and get voted on. So, um, the first one, this is all along the lines of, uh, of legal costs and, uh, wrap, trying to wrap up this issue with, um, um, with the, uh, questions of appointing general counsel, so the first one is to, um, confirm and formally recognize the retention of Mr. Rice. And it reads as follows, um, "Being enacted, uh, by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk as follows, whereas subsequent to the adoption of a rev- resolution by the Board of Trustees on December 2nd, 2019, wherein the Board of Trustees contracted with Terry Rice to run their legal services, Village of Suffolk, Mayor Markounis instituted a proceeding in Supreme Court Rockland County entitled Markounis versus Gerard et al., index number 1570-2019." Uh, and whereas Mayor Markounis sought therein, among other things, to invalidate the resolution adopted by the Board of Trustees in its official capacity, whereas the proceeding named trustee Gerard Corrigan and Barone in their official capacities of the village trustees, as village trustees, whereas being sued in their official capacities, trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone were entitled to be represented by counsel of their choice to represent them in the proceeding, and for the attorney of their choice to be paid by the Village of Suffolk. Whereas on or about December 19th, 2019, trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone retained Terry Rice to represent them in the proceeding entitled Markounis versus Gerard et al., index number 1570/2019, at a reduced hourly rate of $225 per hour. And whereas trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone subsequently executed a retainer agreement with Mr. Rice, acknowledging that he was retained to represent them in their official capacity commencing on or about December 19th, 2019, at an hourly rate of $225 per hour. And whereas despite the fact that having been sued in their official capacity, trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone possessed the right to retain counsel to represent them and properly retain Mr. Rice, village trust, village treasurer Janito has related that he requires a resolution of the Board of Trustees formally retaining Mr. Rice to represent trustee Gerard Corrigan and Barone in the aforementioned litigation in order to pay Mr. Rice for his services. Whereas trustee Gerard Corrigan and Barone desire to confirm and formally recognize their retention of Mr. Rice to res- represent them beginning on or about December 19th, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk that Terry Rice, Esquire, was retained to represent trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone sued in their official capacity in Markounis versus Gerard et al., index number 1570/2019, on or about December 19th, 2019, at an hourly rate of $225 per hour. And be it further resolved that pursuant to the requirement of the village treasurer, the Board of Trustees formally recognizes, authorizes and reaffirms the retention of Mr. Rice commencing on or about December 19th, 2019, to represent trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone sued in their official capacity in Markounis versus Gerard et al., index number 1570/2019. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion, trustee Barone. Second, trustee Megan Corrigan. Um, any further discussion?
Uh, this is, this is, uh, Treasurer Janito, I just want to clarify one thing, it's not a requirement of the village treasurer that we have a resolution authorizing someone to be retained, and therefore authorized to be paid. That's a, a requirement of New York state.
Okay, so yeah, it sort of been more clearly following the instructions you carried out as per New York state.
So whose instructions were you following?
Uh, New York state, Mayor, uh, the New York state law requires that-
I understand that, I, I was asking, uh, trustee Gerard, whose instructions he was following? He, he just made mention that he, he followed some instruction.
Oh, I'm saying that Mr. Janito, in his email, was relating to us, in order to, um, settle this, we needed to adopt two resolutions, so I was following his instruction as per the state of New York.
Did, did, did we have this, this instruction reviewed by counsel?
Uh, this was submitted to the board and including, uh, the attorney, this, the Suffolk attorney email. Uh, what was it, yesterday or the day before, I can't remember when I sent it, I think I sent it yesterday.
Uh, I did see it, again, I have the conflict issue from this case from the beginning, which is why, unfortunately for everyone involved, I have to stay out of that, so.
I believe that the invoice and the retainer, this is, this is on the discussion. The invoice and the retainer needs to be re- reviewed by counsel. This is something that needs to be, it needs to be remewed, the invoice was just, your, your resolution was just submitted um, less than 24 hours ago. This should have never have happened, and you were continuing to cost the village more money. Nothing you have done, Mr. Gerard, has benefited the Village of Suffolk, other than the increased legal cost. You've cost the village $80,000 in legal cost, now you're looking to pay an additional $12,900 for legal action. That Judge Marks from Rockland County Supreme Court found you violated New York state law. I believe that, once again, I believe that if this invoice is paid, Terry Rice, uh, Keenan Bean's invoice must be paid also at the same time. And they need to be reviewed, you were given the opportunity to review Keenan Bean's invoice. Where do we stand with that? This was an, an, an action that I had to undertake because of violations of New York state law. I wish you guys would recognize that and stop leading this village down a path of, of destructiveness. It is absolutely ridiculous, I continue to say that, and I will continue to let the village residents know. It is not right and is not just, and I still demand that these resolutions and retainer for payment to Terry Rice be reviewed by legal counsel.
Any more discussion? Okay, we ready to vote?
Can I take a roll, roll call vote, please?
I have, I have one more thing to say. In the middle of this COVID pandemic, you, the board, are worrying about paying legal fees where you obstructed and broke New York state law, and you're disregarding everything else but your own self-serving interest in getting a, the invoice paid. And we still have an 8% budget increase in front of us, and this is the way you are acting without receiving a discounted rate from Keenan Bean, and you'll continue to pay the outstanding invoices for other attorneys and not pay fairly the representation that is deserved by you breaking the law. That's what I have to say, in the middle of a pandemic, this is what you people are, are, are realizing. Let's pay the bill. I think we have bigger and better things to tackle right now. And this should be reviewed, you, if you don't agree with me having this retainer and, and, uh, resolution reviewed, that is totally ridiculous. Totally irresponsible. This invoice needs to be paid at the same time as Terry Rice. You are opening up the village once again to another lawsuit commenced by Keenan Bean for failing to pay their outstanding invoice for your actions, once again, for breaking New York state law, I can't continue to say it enough. My God, I can't believe it. Unbelievable, I hope the public is listening now. Go ahead, take your vote.
Alright, this, yeah, this bill is one-seventh the size of, uh-
Doesn't matter what size it is.
Yeah, one-seventh.
It's the issue at hand, you broke the law. According to Judge Marks in Rockland County Supreme Court, and we are in the middle of a pandemic. People are dying all around us, and we're worrying about this. Are you kidding me? And you won't even take the time for an attorney to review the resolution and the retainer that you supposedly got? We still don't even know how you obtained this, this retainer. You won't even tell us what took place, Mr. Gerard. Although the judge recognized that you broke the law. Yeah, well, we will move forward, and they'll be, and moving forward will be in court.
Enough, enough.
Enough, that's right, take your vote.
You've had the retainer, we've all had the retainer for months, the resolution is what's new here, and I just read it.
An illegal retainer, it was, it was, it was changed, excuse me, Mr. Uh, Gerard, that initial retainer was changed to indicate a different purpose, you know that. The original retainer was for village council. Village matters, and all of a sudden this retainer got changed to represent you for the illegal action that you took.
Was not illegal, let's move forward.
It absolutely was illegal, what the action-
Not illegal, it was unauthorized, enough.
No, no, illegal, read the, read the decision from Judge Mark.
I have, thank you very much.
You sued us, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, enough, let's move forward.
Move forward.
So you, you're going to wish to take a vote on something that was not- So you, you're going to wish to take a vote on something that was not. That was not reviewed by counsel and you're gonna listen to Paul Gerard, is he our new legal counsel? Please. Good advice, Paul, keep giving the good advice because you've been leading us down the road. No, it's not enough, I am speaking and I am sorry, but the public needs to know this and your actions are still out of line. Still out of line, not even reviewing a retainer agreement or an invoice. Read a decision. From the judge from Rockland County.
All right, all in first, let's have a roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Barone?
Aye.
Trustee Albert?
Abstain.
Trustee Corrigan?
Aye.
Trustee Gerard votes aye. And, uh, Mayor?
I vote no, mayor votes no, and I'm, I'm almost sure that. I'm not sure, but I don't think trustee Albert can abstain. It's either a yes or a no.
Well, I was not part of this litigation. Um, and.
There's no conflict, what is your conflict?
My conflict is that I believe the mayor acted inappropriately by bringing a lawsuit. That is my conflict.
Not a conflict!
The mayor chose to spend eighty thousand dollars in law fees. Where this matter could have been worked out like human beings at a meeting. I feel that the mayor acted incorrectly by taking this matter to court and I also feel that the mayor broke the law. By sending it further to an appeal in Brooklyn at New York State Court of Appeal, Court of Appeals. Without getting approval from Justice Marks to do so. That is a violation of New York State law.
Unfortunately, you don't have to have that and the violation of the New York State law was founded by the judge. That, that, you're still doing the same thing since December second. You guys are going.
We're moving forward, you're not, so let's move forward and let's go.
Move, you're still going down the wrong path, you're approving retainer agreements in the past without review of counsel. You're listening to Paul Gerard, he's the new la, he's the new counselor here. Are you guys kidding? Think of what you're doing. That's all I'm saying to you. You can hear the frustration, but it's ridiculous.
And you.
Go ahead, take your vote.
Okay, I, I believe that it passed.
Okay, you got three.
There were three votes, that does pass.
Three votes passes.
All right, Paul, anything else?
Okay, um, next resolution related to the same matter, this is, um. This is where the Board of Trustees acknowledges that such, um, that a sum is due. Owing to Mr. Rice, uh, as representation in this matter. So being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffering as follows, whereas having been sued in their official capacity in Markunus versus Gerard et al. Index number one five seven zero slash two zero one nine. Trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone possessed the right to retain counsel to represent them. And to have the Village of Suffering pay for such legal services. Whereas on or about December nineteenth, twenty nineteen trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone retained Terry Rice Esquire to represent them. In the aforementioned proceeding instituted against them in their official capacities at an hourly rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And whereas trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone subsequently executed a retainer agreement. With Mr. Rice acknowledging that he was retained to represent them in their official capacity. Commencing on or about December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. At an hourly rate of two twenty-five per hour. And whereas pursuant to the requirements of the village treasurer. As quoted by the village treasurer, excuse me. On April sixth, twenty twenty. The Board of Trustees adopted a resolution formally recognizing, authorizing and reaffirming. The retention of Mr. Rice. Commencing on or about December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. To represent trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone. Sued in their official capacity in Markunus versus Gerard et al. index number one five seven zero slash two zero one nine. And whereas by invoice dated March second, twenty twenty, Mr. Rice sought payment for the legal services rendering. In representing trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone. In their official capacity in Markunus versus Gerard et al. In the sum of twelve thousand nine hundred and one dollar and seventeen cents. And whereas the invoice is fair and reasonable and represents necessary legal services to represent trustee. Gerard Corrigan and Barone. In their official capacity in Markunus versus Gerard et al. And whereas the Board of Trustees acknowledges that such sum is due and owing to Mr. Rice and desires to make payment of the same to him. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffering that the Board of Trustees approves and authorizes the payment. Of the sum of twelve thousand nine hundred and one dollar and seventeen cents. To Terry Rice for legal fee, legal services rendered in representing trustees Gerard Corrigan and Barone. In their official capacity in Markunus versus Gerard et al. And be it further resolved that the village treasurer is authorized and directed to pay to Terry Rice. The sum of twelve thousand nine hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents forthwith. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second trustee Corrigan.
Okay, um, any discussion?
There you go, you know I'm gonna say something. Who wrote the resolution? Trustee, uh, trustee, um, Gerard. Who, who wrote the resolution?
Um, our attorney wrote the resolution.
Who is that?
That's.
Who's your attorney?
Are you, do you have to guess?
I'm asking you a question. I, I, it seems like all the legal advice is coming from you, so I'm asking you the question. Who wrote the resolution?
Our, our attorney, the, uh. It's Terry Rice.
The one who represents us.
Okay, so, so just say it, that's all, I'm just asking. So you're telling me that on the. On the lawsuit that was pursued against the village Board of Trustees by me, which you're a hundred percent correct. You're going to pay your own attorney. That you engaged somehow with a retainer agreement. At a certain date, unbeknownst to me. And that you will not pay the other attorneys. That represented the Village of Suffering.
Absolutely not what we're saying and you're putting words.
And they represented. Where's my hammer, hold on.
Hold on, one at a time.
One at a time.
You have to, you have to maintain order and when somebody's talking, you have to give them that opportunity. You denied, you denied payment to Keenan Bean. You did not bring up the Keenan Bean, you, you absolutely did, upon review, you, you reviewed it, you had the opportunity. And you never brought it forward. But the successful attorneys that represented the village appropriately and lawfully. Who was successful. You are cha, you were not paying, but you're, you're going, you're going to pay the attorney that you hired.
If Keenan Bean would like to take the bill at twelve, at twelve thousand dollars, we'll gladly pay them as well. And until Keenan Bean's bill has been reduced and we all agree upon it, that is when we will pay Keenan Bean as we agreed to.
I'm sorry for interrupting, but you're definitely going to have another lawsuit coming your way, coming the village's way.
I hope that we don't, I hope that you will talk to Keenan Bean. And have them come in with a number that is more reasonable.
They were already.
When I talked to them at the meeting, they told me only you could negotiate with them to make the bill reasonable.
I did and nobody wanted to listen to me, there was, uh, my, the answers that I received was no way are they ever coming back here.
Mayor, I did not want a quid pro quo of we'll reduce the bill if you retain us. I just want them to just reduce the bill so that we can pay them.
Did Terry reduce his bill?
His bill was a fraction of their bill. I never imagined that their bill would be eighty-seven thousand dollars. For one side versus twelve-nine for the other, I thought that maybe they'd be double. And I'd be, I'd be willing to pay them double.
But, I hear you, but you're, you're pay, you're, you're paying, you're paying the one that lost.
Mayor, the reason why the Board does not want Keenan Bean is because the, what they charged to get something done is so obscene.
I think they charge us great. Go ahead.
Mayor, I'm willing to say, let's agree to pay Keenan Bean fifty thousand dollars and move on and that's the end. Do I have the word from the board?
You could make that proposal to them.
I can't, they said only you could make that proposal.
Okay, yeah, okay, is that what the board would like?
I, I'm presenting this for the first time, so I have no idea.
You would agree, so Charles agrees, Steve's agrees, fifty thousand. Uh, Joe? Paul?
I'm sorry, I accidentally cut off by accident.
Oh. Steve made the recommendation to pay Keenan Bean for, uh, fifty thousand dollars for their legal cost. Charles agrees, Steve agrees, do you agree?
I would like to get it reviewed.
You, I thought we had it reviewed.
I think that, I think we, I think that we can bring this back. When we do our other meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay.
And then we can settle this then.
Okay.
We have one resolution in front of us that we've agreed upon and then we will do the Keenan Bean on the fourteenth.
Well, you guys agreed to it, I didn't agree to it, once again, I didn't agree to the resolutions that were presented. And the, the, the same behavior continues, not doing.
No, it is not, Ed, so stop.
It, it is because, uh, uh, I'm getting no response from you, but that's fine, we will move on. They're still doing the same.
We all need, we all need to know, we need to be paid and we will, so let's vote.
Okay, just keep listening to Paul, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you're an, you're an innocent victim in all of this.
Yes, absolutely. I didn't, I didn't violate New York State law, Paul, when are you gonna get that through your head?
Well, you had plenty of opportunities to. Uh, negotiate and work on this out of court, but you decided not to, okay, so we have a motion by.
Okay, so we're gonna move on.
Trustee Barone and a second by trustee Corrigan. Um, can I have a roll call vote, um, uh, trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yeah.
Trustee Albert?
I'm gonna abstain again for the same reasons as before.
You, Steve, to, to abstain, Rob, are, are you on the line? Oh, he can't, Rob can't try and.
I'm on the line.
Yeah, but you can't abstain, that, I'm having a problem with that also, Steve. You have to have a direct conflict and you do not have a direct conflict with the vote that's before you.
Well, except that I was neither sued nor, nor was I the plaintiff, I'm on neither side.
Yeah, but you, you're a village.
And I don't want, I don't wish to take sides on this issue.
You are a village trustee, you have to act accordingly in the best interest of the village. You cannot abstain unless there was a direct conflict that you had.
My, my opinion is that an attorney did work because you chose to sue the board, they did require representation. So in that regard, yes, I agree they, in that regard, I agree that this attorney needs to be paid. However, you have chosen to politicize this issue and I don't want to have any part of that. And that is where my vote comes in, I don't wish to have any part of your politicizing.
I just, I'm asking for counsel to review it. And, and you're, you're abstaining and you, and I, I, I believe you cannot abstain, you do not have a direct conflict, I cannot say it more. You have to vote yes or no.
And I will vote yes if that will make you happy.
Okay, you vote yeah, he votes yes. And I vote no, once again.
And I vote yes.
Motion carries.
Motion passes.
There you go.
Okay, trustee Gerard is done.
At the next meeting, we will be able to have a resolution to pay Keenan Bean after the mayor talks to them about reducing their bill.
Okay.
Ed, are you agreeing to that?
We all agree that they need to be paid. And it is up to the mayor to negotiate an amount.
And that's what we were told in the last meeting.
Where the mayor say that only, only.
Their bill was not contingent upon them continuing to work for the village.
That, that's a hostage situation.
Their bill is contingent upon them getting it paid without having to sue us.
Correct.
That's a hostage situation, we, that is completely ridiculous and not, and not ethical, quite frankly.
Okay, uh, we, uh, I, I'm sorry, uh, there any other trustee matters, because I was only the second trustee to go, so.
Okay.
I have nothing at this time.
No, I have nothing at this time.
I, I did, I just wanted to add in, I, I, I did have some, some, uh, items that I brought up, but, uh, they can pass till the next meeting. The ones I brought up by email.
Okay, all right, um, that's it, motion to close.
I make the motion to close.
Trustee Barone, second?
Second.
Second.
And I have one comment to please make, I vote to close with a comment. That.
Go ahead.
This village board cares very much about this village of suffering and we want everyone to stay safe. And everyone's family be healthy throughout this whole entire crisis.
Okay, um, and at the same time, so we did a, 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 a motion and a second and on the discussion, I'd just like to. Close the meeting in honor of all of our first responders, our police, our firefighters. And most importantly, our doctors, nurses and all healthcare workers. And of course our great, um. DPW staff that has been holding this village together also. And on that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
All right, bye. Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Bye.
Thank you. Motion carried, the public hearing on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one tentative budget is now open. I will present an overview of the tentative budget which has the, has been available on the Village of Suffering website since March nineteenth, twenty twenty. I will then ask each village trustee to present their comments on the tentative budget. Will then read into the record any comments or questions that we have received to date on the tentative budget. This tentative budget covers the fiscal year beginning June one, twenty twenty. And ending May thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And includes all of the major operating funds of the Village of Suffering. The general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund and the debt service fund. The general fund includes all revenues and expenditures that are not required by law or policy to be included in another fund. The water fund includes the revenues and expenditures associated with the operation and maintenance of our water treatment plant. And distribution. And the sewer fund includes the revenues and expenditures associated with the operation and maintenance of our waste water. Treatment plant and collection system. The debt service fund includes the revenues and expenditures related to the repayment of our long-term serial bonds. Major, the major revenue source of the general fund is real property taxes levied by the village. The major source of revenues for the water fund and the sewer fund are the water and sewer rates. Charged to customers using village-supplied water. The debt service fund revenues are transfers and from each of the other funds to support. The payment of principal and interest on long-term debt issued for each of those funds. The tentative budget document also includes a variety of schedules related to salaries and wages. Short and long-term debt repayment and proposed capital projects. The tentative budget. The tentative budget calls for an eight point three percent increase in village property taxes. This increase reflects increases in expenditures, predominantly wage and benefit increases in accordance with union contracts, and almost a one percent decrease in assessed valuations. If the tentative budget is adopted unchanged, the village taxes on the average single-family home would increase two hundred ninety-five dollars per year. The budget and rate for water fund will remain relatively unchanged in the forthcoming year. The budget for the sewer fund will result in a slight increase of approximately twenty-six dollars per year for the median village household. I personally met with department heads to review their budget requests, and we did make some downward adjustments to their original request. However, seventy-five percent of the village budget, budget is associated with salaries and benefits covered by union contracts. Likewise, the reduction in assessed values is the result of a, of successful challenges brought by homeowners against their property assessment. As such, it is difficult to find additional and significant reductions to the real property tax rate, especially when you consider that it takes approximately one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars in additional revenue and/or reduced expenditures for more than one point three million in increased assessed valuations to move the tax rate increase down by one percent. I will now ask each board member to present their comments on the twenty twenty, twenty-one tentative budget. And let's start with Deputy Mayor Stephen Alpert, please.
Yes, um, well, I did present several, uh, comments, uh, by, uh, email to, uh, the treasurer. Um, I haven't reviewed all of the responses because he also responded to Paul Gerard's, uh, many, uh, requests for questions. So there's a lot of material to review. Uh, however, in general, I feel that we can work together and considerably reduce the proposed eight point three percent and get it below the two percent New York State mandated cap. I think we have an obligation to the residents of Suffering to come in under the cap.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alpert. Trustee Gerard?
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have some questions. I appreciate Mr. Gino getting back to me on my, my long list of, uh, items. Um, first question, can we explain to the board and to the public the primary driver of the loss of eight hundred sixty-one thousand in tax assessment value? Is this primarily, is this anything to do with Squire's Gate? Or is it mostly people grieving their taxes, or is it something else?
Mayor, I can answer that. Uh, this is Michael Genito, treasurer. Essentially, according to our assessor, Robert Davies, it's across the board. Um, yes, indeed, certain properties on Squire's Gate, um, we lost value for those, having been gone now. But as well, it was just across the board with a lot of tax sorcery challenges and settlements that were, as you know, Town of Rampo acts as our assessor, reduce the assessment on both residential and business properties. There wasn't any one large, huge uh, reduction in assessment for any single property.
Thank you. Um. Okay, on the, um, I might jump around here, I apologize. Uh, on the water fund, um, last year, at this time, we spoke about addressing the situation where there are high-volume users of water and, um, looking to, to build those out at higher rates. I know there was a question about some of those being multi-residential homes that had maybe one shared meter. Um, is there an opportunity to, uh, to make an adjustment so that the higher proportion, the higher volume users are charged um, proportionally higher than the low-volume users?
Uh, not at this time for this budget. We are preparing the RFP for a wa, uh, water rate and sewer rate study that will take into account the users of that, the volume users, as well as the equity issues involving residential properties that are charged at higher rates.
Okay. Um. The, in the sewer fund, the text of, the text, um, summary that you put in to the budget document, a tentative budget document, mentions that the primary driver of the increase in the sewer fund is a two hundred thousand dollar loan repayment to the general fund. That, that loan payment was also made in this year's budget, so that really isn't a cause for the increase. Um, that should be a flat year over year. So is there something else driving that increase?
I'll take a look at the various line items in that budget, but essentially, we, we have had increases in, uh, some debt repayment because we borrowed money last year for some items, but as well, uh, there are just standard operating things that are involved. We also have, as you know, uh, some promotions that are recommended in that budget for two positions in the sewer department.
Okay, so it's a, it's a different explanation as to the increase than what's in the document. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, it, the, in the general fund, I had several questions related to various salary and wage increases. I understand the explanation was primarily that there're CSEA contract increases and PBA contract increases. I didn't understand why there were so many varying amounts. You know, some people had an eight percent increase, a twelve percent increase, a five percent increase, a seven percent increase. I'm puzzled that, there were, there were no increments of that nature that were in the CSEA contract. I, I'm a little confused as to why the increases would be, A, so high, and B, so different department by department. Is that anything you can help clear up, Mr. Gino?
Yes, uh, as you probably know, in both the PBA and the CSEA contracts, they have cost of living increases that for the PBA this year is three percent. I forget what the CSEA is this year, but it's less than three percent. In any event, in addition to any cost of living increases, somebody who's working for the first five years of their employment are getting step increases. So a police officer hired at grade five, it moves up to a grade four and likewise to a grade three the next year and so forth. Uh, with the CSEA, they just have steps, they call step one, two, three, four, five. And for each of those, there's an increase in addition to the cost of living increase. Beyond the step increases, once a person has reached their five years, and in the police case, every years, they get as well what's called a longevity increase, and that's typically a percentage or dollar amount, I should say a dollar amount, uh, on top of the regular salary. So that an individual with the same title, who has just started, and let's say completes one year, will get a different percentage increase than somebody who is between their longevities and has already gone past the five steps in a CSEA contract. Likewise, with the police, a, a police officer who has reached, uh, a grade one, which is the top grade for a police officer, is going to get the cost of living increase, but if his companion police officer, also a grade one, happens to have, uh, another longevity, another three years of service, he will get more of an increase percentage-wise than the person that did not get that longevity increase.
All being contractual.
Yes, it's all within the contracts.
Okay, um, I know in the past, we've gotten that kind of detail, at least for the, um, the, uh, police officers. And, but we did not get that, um, in the document that's on the website now. We just have a comparison, this year's budget to next year's budget. As a follow-up, can we be provided the, um, by individual who's getting a cost of living, a longevity, et cetera?
Yes, we can share that with the board, yes.
Okay, and can we get that for the, the CSEA, um, members as well?
We will give you the entire salary schedule, everyone in it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had a number of items, line items, that I guess I was making proposals to reduce because, looking at the four-year average of expenditures, it seemed like, um, we were budgeting, you know, higher, so I was proposing, you know, anywhere from five thousand on one line to fourteen on another, to eight on another. Um. Do you want to go through those now, or do we want to, um, use this as a follow-up? Uh, I, I can't imagine this is gonna be our only round of this. Um, how, how do you want me to proceed here?
I think that we could take all of that, all of those, um, requests, this is the mayor, um, and we'll analyze them together, Mike, and we'll take a look at it and see what we could come up with and develop some type of spreadsheet possibly, and to see what, where those, um, recommendations fall within each department. It's gonna be a little challenging, um, with, with all of us doing this over the phone, but would you make that same recommendation, Mr. Genito?
Uh, Mayor, what we can do is, I already, as you know, responded to the board and, and to trustee Gerard's questions, and if you'd look on the far-right column where he had a question as to why something was a certain value, I provided, uh, the analysis for that. There are a few items, though, that, uh, were really the basis of, let's say, the recommendation of the department, whether it be Public Works or Police, where I could just simply say, yes, it, it looks like this didn't meet the requirement, uh, of, let's say, why do we always have this amount in there? Uh, but the department head couldn't answer that. We could get back to them. I, I would think that, looking through that entire spreadsheet, a lot of the questions were, as we just talked about, um, salary increases predominantly due to contracts, uh, which are, you know, which we couldn't change. Some things are promotions that could be discussed by the board, and there's, other than that, certain items that if they were out of the range of what they typically had as a four-year average, the department recommended it. I know equipment was part of it in Public Works, and some of that equipment is old, but yes, to make the answer short, um, we can work on that together and get back the answers from the department heads as to whether they're comfortable reducing that further, uh, based on the trend that has been there in the past.
Okay. Thank you, and just to be clear, um, I, I did not put any amounts next to any of the questions I had regarding salaries and wages. I really just had the questions themselves. Um, the, the amount where I was proposing was all in the, um, the, the other types of discretionary spending of either contractual or equipment, et cetera. Um, those amounts added up to a total of two hundred sixty, sixty-three thousand dollars in the general fund. Uh, again, separate from salary and wages. Um, and included in that was a proposal to reduce the contingency in the general fund from two hundred to one fifty, or, said another way, the total contingency in the entire budget from five hundred to four fifty. Um, I just feel like we have to, um, this eight percent number is entirely too high, and, um, we do, we do build in some protection of risk, but, um, I'm proposing that we drop that protection of risk by ten percent, which would equate to fifty thousand.
Uh, what, um, contingency were you talking about dropping from five hundred to four fifty? The contingency is two hundred thousand in the general fund.
Yeah, well, the total contingency across all three funds is five hundred. It's two hundred in general fund, two hundred in the water fund, and one hundred in the sewer fund. And I'm proposing that it be one fifty, two hundred, and one hundred. I'm also suggesting in that number that the, uh, police chief had recommended a reduction in the overtime of seventy-five thousand. Um, I would like us to accept that proposal and have the police chief, on a monthly basis, report the previous month's overtime in the, uh, at the workshop meeting each month, so that we can monitor the pace of overtime and see if we can, um, manage it accordingly throughout the year.
Uh, the one thing that the board should be aware of is that this year, the overtime is going to approach three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, there is a three percent increase next year. That would typically add another ten thousand and change to the, to the amount, so we're talking about maybe three sixty or three sixty-five, if the trend is the same. The police chief had also noted that a lot of the increase that he was asking for is related to the new criminal justice reform. Um, that while they're talking about amending that in some regard, there isn't anything definitive yet, so that's something the board has to consider before they reduce the overtime for the police. Uh, the issue of bringing it up on a monthly basis is, is certainly a, a good idea to, to manage it, but again, if the overtime is required, is needed, then you're, you don't want to find yourself in the middle of the year being short, as we have for the last two years, on the overtime that was budgeted.
So I spoke directly with the police chief in regards to that reduction also. Um, so we'll, we'll continue that conversation. He was open to reducing, um, that amount due to the fact that um, certain criminal justice reforms are going to be, um, reformed or removed. Right, there's, there's different, there's different, different, um, processes that they put in place that may save us overtime, so we're going to work through that.
Okay, good. Yeah, and just for context, uh, for the public, um, twenty seventeen overtime, two hundred forty-six thousand. Twenty eighteen, these are actual numbers, two hundred ninety-two thousand. Twenty nineteen, three hundred and fifty-six thousand. And, Mike, you indicated we're forecasting about three sixty-four for twenty twenty, so it's escalated quite a bit. Um, without monthly review, I think a monthly review will help us to keep tabs on it and, and possibly control it. And, um, I like what I'm hearing, what the mayor said about that there are some things, um, being retracted from the, uh, the current law, so I, I think there's a good opportunity here to reduce this number fairly significantly.
Yes, I agree. Um, but at the same time, let's all keep in mind in the public, uh, that in regards to overtime for, be it the police department, CSEA, or whomever, the, the total amount of overtime will increase as salaries increase as well, contractual obligations, just to keep that in mind.
Yep. Um, there are other items in here, I, I guess what I've learned over the years, I guess with government accounting, is, um, if we budget something and we don't spend it, um, you know, it, it obviously improves our fund balance, but according to Mr. Gino, we're, we're not at a point with our fund balance where we can consider some of it a surplus to help us out in the following year. Um, therefore, there are a few line items here where I indicated that we still have two months in the current year where we are, we have spent less than budget, and if we can. And if we can possibly pre-spend for some things, like for example, whether it's chemicals for the pool or maintenance parts for some of our equipment that we expect and we regularly do spend, it's just a timing issue. Can we pre-spend those now in April and May and have them hit this budget? And then not be charred, and that corresponding number could be reduced in next year's budget. And it's not a, it's not an additional hit to the taxpayers. So there are some, there are a handful of items where I indicated that as a possible means of reducing the budget amounts.
I think in certain instances, we may do that. I believe, I believe in the DPW, especially in regards to salt, some chemicals, but I'm not sure, but we could definitely look into that. I want to go back to the overtime also, back to the police overtime because of the, you know, just as the fact that I stated with contractual and the rates going up, also with arrest situations and overtime, something that's uncontrollable, injuries due to the police officers in 207(c) required by law and arrest. We all have to keep all of that in mind.
Agreed.
And you know what, coming up, just one more thing. Across the board, we have to keep in mind everything moving forward with this COVID pandemic that we are into. As you all recognize, that it's maybe at its apex now, it may be peaking. I know that we have people getting tested on a regular basis. We're taking all preventative measures to protect all of our first responders, including our DPW workers. But everyone is susceptible to this disease. And once they start, you know, God forbid, if anything happens, we have to continue to staff the entire village, be it police, CSEA, or the administration. Just keep that in mind. During this budget process, we don't know how long this is going to last.
Right, agreed. And hopefully, for multiple reasons, the worst of it is in the very near term versus lingering on extensively into next year's fiscal year.
We don't know that.
No, I know, I understand.
Yeah, 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 we don't know that. But I'd rather, I'd rather budget on the safe side than not. You know, I'd rather have the money available to us to run the operation in the village than not.
Okay, it's fair. It's just we're, you know, we have situations where, you know, the state of emergency that we applied for with the state, that should help fund some of that stuff. So I don't want to, I don't want to overburden the taxpayers when we've got that state of emergency approval from New York, from the governor.
Right, well, I agree, but as you could see, what's happening on the news and with small businesses at the same time, when it's turning into, it's turning into a disaster. But let's just, let's just err on the side of safety and caution. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, in the in the water fund and the sewer fund, I'm a little confused as to in the water fund, what is in the base salary and wages line in terms of individuals? And it appears to be budgeted as employees. I want to make sure that they're employees because I know we have JCO running, doing a lot of work at the plant. And then we have professional and consulting in the sewer expense budget, and there's dollars there. So I'm just trying to understand who's budgeted where. And because there are, you know, there are some substantial changes, and I just wanted to make sure I understood who's what, who's where.
This is Michael Genito, treasurer here. The personal services line is the salaries and wages of employees only. It doesn't include independent contractors. And the water fund and the sewer fund, as well as the general fund. If you want to see the detail of what makes up those personal service lines, you then go to the Schedule of Salaries and Wages in the budget document, which is, I believe, on page 27. Well, it carries, starts at page 27. So the consulting and the sewer fund is primarily JCO Engineering, which is the firm that the village has been using for several years now in order to fulfill our requirements to have a grade for a operator on staff, because there is not one on staff at the moment. And in addition to that, any, there's some other minor amounts in there for engineering that might be needed for special work to be done at the sewer plant. In terms of the, also on the sewer and the water fund included in the professional consulting, that's where we charge our grant writer. We split it between those two funds because predominantly the grant writer, the vast majority of the money that's been coming in through various grants has come in through the sewer and water plants. So that's, that's in there.
Okay. So as one follow-up, can, I request the village clerk to furnish the rest of the board with the JCO contract, a copy of that contract?
I think we did that.
I'm sorry?
Trustee Corrigan, oh, trustee Corrigan, you received a copy of the JCO contract?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so it only went-
Yes, I did. I thought, I thought it went to the whole board, though.
Okay, we'll resend it.
I apologize.
Oh, that was my mistake. I didn't put this to you with CC, sorry.
All right, we'll resend it.
All right, thank you. And then, okay, so then back on the, I'll go back to the water expense line since Mike, thank you, Mike, you explained which line is JCO. So going back to the water expense in, I guess this would be the account starting in 8320. The the base, the base wages were, we had chief operator was increased 16% and assistant chief operator plus 22%. Are those per the CSEA contract, or is there something else in there?
That is actually promotional recommendations from the Public Works superintendent, you know, Charles Sawicki.
Okay, so these are proposed and to be, I guess, so the board needs to review these?
Yes.
Okay. And again, there are a couple of examples of items in the water fund where filter chemicals and repairs and improvements were underspent this year, seeing if there's an opportunity to pre-spend or pre-spend over the next couple of months and maybe avoid expenses into next year.
Yes, and we're going to have to take a closer look at that because in many cases, we still have April and May. And in many cases, some of the expenses that we get into come in April and May. So I know that one of the questions you had about the licenses, software licenses, that's in one of the accounts, was actually that, a lot of that comes in in May. So we can get that detail for you.
Okay. All right, I believe that's, then the legal services that are distributed amongst the three funds, is that for labor? Is that a portion of general counsel? What portion of legal service is that?
As you know, last year, we had an $80,000 retainer agreement with an outside law firm to provide legal services. And that's how that was divided. It was $40,000 for the general fund, $20,000 for the water, and $20,000 for the sewer.
Okay, so that would have covered general counsel. So where, so does the labor council and the other council, does that all go in the general fund?
Generally, it, yes, it's going to the general fund. What will happen is if we do settle a contract and it's something very specific to one of the other funds, then that would have been separated. But no, in most cases, labor council is charged just through the general fund.
Okay. And then, Mike, with the COVID-19 situation, I know in the past, we've gotten updates very late in the process on some of the state aid, some of the estimates of retirement and medical insurance and things like that. Given the COVID situation and, you know, I'm sure, you know, just the challenges of being as productive as we have been in normal years, are you expecting an update to some of these numbers? I know in the past, we've been fortunate, they've come down a bit late, late in the process.
Well, for the benefits of retirement, no, I wouldn't expect any significant changes because that is actually, as you know, the retirement system is long-term planning over 30 years, and they smooth things out over five years. So if there were, for some reason, some increased costs related to a retirement and the state had to pass it on, it wouldn't be happening now. They wouldn't suddenly send us a bill at this point. They would just build it into next year's bill, not the one that's due to be paid next year, but the one beyond that. And then with the medical benefits, you know, it's like any other insurance. It depends on who's hit, how hard they're hit, and then it's spread across, we're part of the New York State Health Insurance Plan, and that's spread across most of the municipalities, the state of New York, and all of the political subdivisions, with the exception of those that go with a different medical plan somewhere. So, yeah, the plans themselves, or the plan itself, you know, we can only base our estimate on what we've seen as a trend. And right now, we've built in there, I think it's a 5.2% increase based on what's happened over the last four years.
Okay. Do you expect to get an update from the state that would firm up that number before we have to approve the budget?
I don't think, no, I don't think the state's going to provide us with any update. They generally, first of all, the NYSIP plan, it's very few and far between that they provide us updates. They generally do it on a quarterly basis. So the next one will come probably after we've actually adopted the budget.
Okay. I remember we were blessed with some good news last year's process on some of these things. Okay, and CHIPS money, I realize the state determines the amount, but when do we find out about that? I mean, it doesn't look like we've, we've gotten any recently.
The reason why you only see $26,000 in there and nothing in other years is because CHIPS money generally, that's for roads and sidewalks and curbs. We generally use the CHIPS money in our capital projects, road resurfacing, sidewalk replacements, curbs, et cetera. So that's generally brought into the capital project fund, and it's a few hundred thousand dollars a year. The $26,000 that happened to appear in the general fund was because we had some CHIPS money, a small amount, that we could apply to, I believe it was either sidewalk or some street repairs that were just done through the general fund, it didn't require a major project.
Let me see. Okay. All right, I think that covers all my questions. Thanks for everyone's patience. Ms. Corrigan?
Yeah, so I had sent an email out to all the department heads and had asked them to let us know what further decreases that they felt that they could do. And we've gotten some very good suggestions, and we're still working through some of them with some questions and things that we have to, you know, work on and check with Mike because I know some of them, we cannot change. Like you had said by New York State, that we couldn't change some of them. So that is still a work in progress. And then I think, once we all look at some of the other things that Mr. Gerard spoke about, I think that, you know, we'll have a better number because 8.3 is definitely too high for our residents. And, you know, I think that this board is good, and we will be able to get that down quite a bit.
Okay.
Is Charlie able to speak?
I know, now. I see that Charles is, Charlie Verone is online, apparently, on his phone, but he is self-muted on his phone. So unless he can dial in or use the actual unique access code that he had, or perhaps get in on a computer, it doesn't look, it looks like he's attentive, but he's just not able to speak. Okay.
Do you think, do you think he could unmute it if we texted him?
I did send him a text earlier, but then again, he's, well, I didn't get a response back, but I'm not quite sure why he's not, you know, why he's muted.
I texted him as well, and he's not, he's not answering.
Also, is there, Mike, is there a way to unmute Rob? Because Rob is muted at the moment. And although he doesn't need to be, you know, speaking to the budget, but he will be for the rest of the board meeting when we resume that.
Yeah.
I'm unmuted. I just got unmuted, but maybe that's what Charles had, no, thank you, Joe. Maybe that's what Charles is facing.
No, Charles has something different. He called in by phone, and I'm not, I'm not sure. Maybe he, if Charles wants to dial into the general number for the public, and try that one, that might be able to work.
He did, I did just text him. Yeah, I just texted him, and he said that he's trying to unmute. That was the text he sent me. So maybe he's going to call back in with the correct access code.
Or maybe if he wants to, he can call in with the public access code, and when I see him show up, I can unmute him.
Okay, we're going to-
By the way, I just wanted to say something, this is trustee Alpert. I just wanted to also say, I didn't have a lot prepared to speak about today because I was under the impression that we were not to speak much because of the transcription issue. So I basically had just prepared that one statement and did everything else by email. So I apologize to any public that's listening that I was not prepared to have a lot of questions for the public hearing here because I was led to believe that we couldn't speak too much today.
I think, I think you were on point there with, we're not making a refrain from speaking, but that was the point, to submit all your questions and comments and then, you know, keep the speaking to a minimum, yes.
So yes, I just wanted to apologize to the public for that.
Don't apologize. Okay, Charles, are you on or not? No, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like he, it looks like he just came on again, but away, he might be actually, are you there, Charles? It looks like you're active.
I think there was something where he has to hit the pound sign to be able to talk.
No, he's dialing in on his regular, but he's, I sent him a PIN so he could log in, a separate PIN to help him.
Super.
Well, we can give him a minute while, if somebody else wants to cover something on the public hearing side.
No, I think we all said what we, because we're going to, you know, still have more conversations. So, you know, this is only our first meeting, and I think we have a lot of positive to add.
Yeah, and just to clarify one thing, I know, Joe, you had mentioned that we, some of the things I had related that they were fixed by New York State, that was on the revenue side of things. Things like birth and death certificates and certain fines and forfeitures are fixed by state rather than local law. So that's where we have some restriction in terms of raising revenue.
As I did mention, this is trustee Alpert, as I- Um, as I did mention, this is trustee Alpert, as I did mention in, uh, one of my emails, I am in favor of, uh, raising, uh, for instance, water rates to those outside the village. I think should, should pay a disproportionately higher portion because they're not paying property tax. So I think that, you know, as a, as in return for that, they should be paying higher water rates and sewer rates.
Okay. Mr. Barone? I guess we're not really going to pick up on Mr. Barone.
No, it doesn't look like he's even on at this moment.
Okay, so we'll continue on, um, Mike, do you recommend we read into the record any comments or questions we receive from the public at this time?
I would say yes, if there's anything that the public has sent in at this point, why not?
Anybody have anything from the public? I have one email from the public. Hi, Mayor Markounis and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the upcoming budget, albeit under these less than ideal COVID nineteen circumstances. I guess at the end.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, this, this is for the record. I am, I, I read, I read an interesting article in the Journal News recently with particularly in light of village actions, seems to be especially relevant. According to the article, the following information was reported. In Westchester, trustees in the village of Briar Cliff Manor are unpaid. In the village of Bronxville, the position of trustee is voluntary. Larch Mount, no salary. Pelham Manor, volunteer positions. Scarsdale, also a volunteer position. Each of these are two-year elected seats, much like our village. In Rockland, grand view on the Hudson trustees are each a four-year term with an annual salary of one dollar. And in Upennayac, trustees hold a two-year term with no salary. I'm troubled, as I believe are many suffering taxpayers, by the financial burden that recent trustee actions have placed on our village. At several of the public board meetings since the beginning of the year, residents have spoken about how our monies could and should have been used for far more productive things than legal issues that required resolution. In light of that, and with the added knowledge that so many neighboring trustees without compensation, even where there are no extenuating circumstances, I ask that the board consider waiving the salaries of each trustee for the length of their term and that those funds instead, instead be earmarked to be returned to the reserve account that was partially depleted as a result of their actions. Not only would this help alleviate taxpayer stress for the coming budget year, but perhaps it might act as a good faith first step in restoring the public's damaged confidence in the trustees. I hope that this suggestion will receive your serious consideration and that it can be reflected in the final budget. Thank you for your time and I wish each of you continued good health during this difficult period. Gertrude Zimbevaut. Do we have any other readings?
Can I have that for the record, please?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, as noted earlier, the village board will accept comments and questions concerning the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one tentative budget by email to budget@sufferingny.gov through, through this Wednesday, April eighth. And hold a brief teleconference to be scheduled shortly thereafter to read those comments and questions into the record as part of this public hearing. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing, open to provide time and place for public comments or questions received through April eighth to be read into the record of the public hearing?
Motion.
Who is that? Who was the first?
Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert. Second by trustee Corrigan. I hear trustee Barone is on now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you now.
Can we get his comments before we close the hearing?
Yeah, but, uh, just let me finish with this. Yeah, I'm not closing yet.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the April eighth reading into the record? All in favor?
Aye.
Corrigan.
Corrigan, Alpert, Bert Gerard.
Can Barone?
He didn't hear the motion.
Oh, he didn't hear the motion.
I said yes, I heard it.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, this trustee Gerard, you said April eighth?
April eighth. Wednesday, April eighth, is that correct? Let me check my calendar now.
Yeah, that, that would be this Wednesday. So we're continuing on the eighth?
No, it would be taking the public input for the record up to the eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I, okay, I agree with that. I apologize, thank you.
Okay.
So now all in favor, we have to.
Right, did we do an all in favor?
No, we did it before, but it was before Mr. Gerard cut, uh, comments.
Okay, all in favor of April eighth?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carried, the public hearing will be continued to provide time for public comments or questions received through April eighth, twenty-twenty, to be read into the record. Okay, do we, do we want to set a date to reconvene hearing? Hold on.
We don't have a date set.
We don't have a date set?
No.
No, we'll send, uh, well, we have to continue the hearing.
We have to continue to a date certain so I can notice it.
So does somebody have a recommendation? For the, Mike, would you have a good recommendation on the timing?
Uh, Mayor, we could do it on the ninth because that would then take into account all the comments from the public that came through the eighth. It also gives the board a few days to look over and for us to get those answers from the departments back to the board on questions that they raised.
The ninth and tenth of religious holidays.
Oh, all right, then let's pick another one because, uh, if that's the case, the following week, if you like.
Holy Thursday and Good Friday. How about?
You'll say Tuesday, how about Tuesday of next week?
Fourteenth. Is that good, Mike? Are we?
That's fine by me.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to continue the public hearing at seven PM on April fourteenth?
Motion, I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alpert, second by that was.
Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, any discussion on that date and time? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes continuation, April fourteenth, twenty-twenty at seven PM. Okay. I need a motion to continue with the regular board of trustees meeting for this evening. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Corrigan, second by trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.